Good morning, everyone. We'll call the July tenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Jackson City Council Order, and we're going to ask Councilman Carver Buchanan to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
This morning, God, our heavenly Father, as we petition thy throne of grace, we come as humbly as we know how. First of all, thanking you for another day's service, for waking us up this morning and looking around and seeing all our loved ones doing well. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have so richly bestowed upon us. We pray and ask for your continued blessings and for you to keep us in our keeping. Forgive us of our many sins that we have transgressed against thee. Thank you for dying on the cross and rising again with all power in your hand. Father, grant this council and the mayor wisdom, courage, knowledge, and conviction on how to serve the city. Teach us to lead, facilitate the things necessary to have a better city. Father, we have a great city, but we can make it better. East, west, north, and south, we are all the same. Fathers, let us work together for the betterment of Jackson, Tennessee. We'll be forever grateful to you and give you the praise and the glory, the honors already yours. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mayor, I think you can show... Yes, you can. All council members present, or they will be within thirty seconds. Item four is approval of the minutes of June fifth, June twelfth, and June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen city council meetings. Council members have received a copy of those, but there are no additions or corrections. There's no problem with council. We'll go ahead and accept those as submitted. Item five is the invitation of public comment and for our audience if you... There's an item under new business which you would like to approach the council. If you'll let me know at that time, then I'll be happy to call on you to address the council. We have no proclamations this morning. We have some special guests, one from Union University and one from Lane College here. Lee Benson from Union is here, and Richard Donnell, I think, is here from Lane. And these two have been collaborating on a project for a city, and you two will come on up and address the council. Thank you for being here, and thank you for what you've done thus far. Benson is one primarily responsible for, number one, our memorial at Unity Park at the Civic Center commemorating the death of those people killed in tornado. And then some other sculptures located in or around our city, and very instrumental in putting those together over the years, so we're very appreciative of him. So with that, Lee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just a supreme pleasure to be here and address you all. This is actually... Well, I am Lee Benson. I'm a sculptor. I'm also chairman of the Art Department at Union University. This is Mr. Richard Donnell, who I'm so grateful is here. He's special assistant to President of Lane College, Dr. Logan Hampton, and he's here representing Lane and Dr. Hampton. This is the second time I've actually met the city council. The last time I was presenting the idea for the Bethel sculpture, which is across from the Civic Center. I hope you all have enjoyed the results of that meeting. While I was building that sculpture, we were... We built that with funds we raised from the community, and it was to celebrate this sense of community that I founded Jackson, it's a new citizen here. And so during the process, we found ourselves sixty thousand dollars short for funding stone. And someone told me about a Dr. Melvin Wright and asked me to go see him and that he might work with me and be willing to fund it. And I went to see him in his office, and he immediately agreed to find men and women in Jackson that would come together and bring that sixty thousand dollars to bear on that sculpture. And then he said something I'll never forget. He said, "You know, the black man was left out of the last hundred years of Jackson Madison County. We will not be left out of the next hundred years." And I was shocked by that because I had never thought about my life in two-hundred-year increments. I just think of my life in ninety-sixty-year increments. But here was a man that I was sitting in front of, and he thought of his life in two-hundred-year increments. And he's not even going to live those two-hundred years. He's only going to live those central sections. But he wanted to be a part of this community. And again, I was taken by just this strong city and county and community and what you all and we mean to one another. And so I'm here today to present a new idea. After I heard that, I kept it in the back of my mind. I went to Mayor Gist several years later and asked him about building a sculpture that would celebrate the contribution of the African-American to the success of Jackson Madison County. Mayor Gist was completely on board. He assigned somebody from the city, I don't know who, but we met down at Sherlene Mercer Park. We talked about the sculpture. After that, the economy turned south. Mayor Gist said he didn't have any money, but I continued to meet with him about once a year for the last four, five years. And about a year ago, he said he believed the funds were available. And so I'm going to show you briefly what the sculpture looks like and explain it to you. Oh, gosh. You live and die by technology, don't you? All right, somebody help me. Who's that guy supposed to help me?
Marcus. Marcus.
Here he comes.
Oh, Stan gets you going.
I pressed the wrong button. There you go. So this is how the sculpture will look. It is a... We'll build a massive hill about fifty feet across with a flat top. On top of that hill will be placed seven large boulders, and each one of those boulders, I've asked... I've met with several members of the community, the NAACP, Reverend Williams with Code Red, several of the community leaders, Mr. Donnell, Dr. Hampton. And what I want them to do is choose seven individuals in the history of Jackson Madison County that exemplify what Jackson Madison County means. And that is somebody that gets up every day, goes to work, makes this community better, doesn't do it for recognition, does it because that's just who they are. And so these seven individuals or maybe groups, we have the sixty-first colored cavalry out of the Civil Wars on a growing list that may be on there, and also the students of Lane College during the city in the nineteen-sixties, so they're on the list. But anyway, seven people or groups will be represented, and a bronze plaque will be embedded in these large boulders at the top of this hill. Now, around the base of this hill... There we go. Will be three concentric rings of trees. And those trees will represent the youth, the African-American youth of Jackson Madison County. And the reason this is, is that you have to look up that hill at these stones. Humans have always looked up. We've knit up. We've gone up. That's the whole point of humanity. But today, I'm not sure that the youth know the great individuals in their community that have got up every day and worked and sacrificed to make their community what it is today, to give them the opportunities they have today. I can remember Representative Johnny Turner. I was at a meeting called the lynching at Jackson State back a month or two ago, and she said... She was speaking, and she said... She was telling about her experiences in the civil rights movement in Memphis, and she said, "You know, I'll tell my experience to high school kids, and they'll go, 'Well, I just wouldn't take that.'" And she said, "My answer's always the same. That's right. You don't have to, because I already did." And so I think that's the people... Young people need to see and be celebrated and know this is the way great communities thrive. People just get up every day, and they go to work, and they love their neighbor, they forgive their neighbor, they serve the greater good, they sacrifice, they go home tired, they go to bed, they wake up the next day and do it all over again. And so that's what this sculpture is about. That's how it's laid out. That's the metaphors for all the parts of it. I do see this as a vital part of the downtown redevelopment plan, much like Liberty Park in North Jackson, which I have certainly enjoyed watching its development over the last several years. It's just a beautiful contribution to the citizens of Jackson. I also have a longer hope for this sculpture, and that is that eventually it will be a place where the history of the African-American community in Jackson Madison County could be told. So now comes the rub right now, I guess, where I come with my handout. I have asked Mayor Gist for forty thousand dollars, but I think it might go upwards to sixty, but that would be on the very outside edge to build this sculpture. Now, when I built Bethel, most... The city didn't put out any cash. I raised all that cash myself. But what the city did, which was unbelievably generous and kind, was that the personnel and the equipment and the resources of Jackson Madison County were made available to us. And so I think if that process plays itself out, the lower figure is a very reasonable amount of money to expect this to be built. And lastly, I would say that I want to be a part of this lasting story. I've lived here twenty-one years. I want to be a part of this lasting story, this ongoing story, this really wonderful story called Jackson Madison County. So can I answer any questions?
Do you have a location for that?
It'll be at Sherlene Mercer Park.
That's what I thought you said. I wanted to be sure.
Has the great visibility off of seventy, off of, you know, the right F.E. Wright. Lee, thank you all, and Richard, thank you for bringing Lane College into this, because I think it's absolutely critical that a good relationship and a good working environment between the two universities, two great universities in our city collaborate in putting this together. It is my hope, certainly, and I think the hope of the council, that some group, some... Doesn't necessarily have to be appointed by the council or recommended at the point, but by me, would spend a lot of time and a lot of effort in picking those seven organizations or those seven individuals that's on those stones, on those boulders, because it'll be something that'll be there for many, many years and hope to be used as a motivation for our young people in East Jackson, motivation for all of us to let us know the heritage and where we come from. So I appreciate your time and effort. Any questions of council, and I'll have maybe a recommendation there in a few minutes. Any observation by council? I have, and I passed it around, Lee. There's a number of graphic in this, and I'll pass this on to council and let you show one, but there's a number in the hard copy that I'll share with council. As Lee mentioned, there are really no funding set aside specifically for this project now. We're hopeful, extremely hopeful, that somewhere in the process this year that we will have some remaining funds from existing capital projects which are budgeted and will take place, hopefully with the city's participation as far as personnel and equipment. On a lot of those projects, we can have a surplus left out of a number of those projects left to consolidate that funding to go into Sherlene Mercer and the tribute that's planned. We will have some funding. I'm going to ask the... Unless council has a better method of moving this forward, ask the Parks and Recreation Department and their board, Lee, if you and Richard don't mind, one more stop, and that is to appear before the Parks and Recreation Board, their next meeting, whenever that may be. Lay the proposal out for them, and then working with the staff of the recreation parks, we can begin to formulate our plans for getting something to happen out there. I anticipate it being pretty much the same process as we did on the unity structure at the Civic Center, is that the city would provide much of the personnel, most of the equipment to do it. There will be some, obviously, some cost involved, but I think with the equipment we have, personnel we have, and expertise we have, I think we can do an awful lot without expending a great deal of money locally. So that's the plan, unless council has another way of moving it forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Statement, if I may. I think it's an excellent conception and excellent idea that Lane College and Union has come up with in preserving history. If you don't know where you come from, you don't know where you're going. It's an excellent structure and layout that you have put up, and you have put up one, two in the city already.
One large one. We run a sculpture tour where we bring artists from around the country, actually around the world, to place a piece in the city.
It gives our youth a chance to know, and hopefully there are a lot of tools once we get that. It gives our youth a chance to know and get that knowledge on where we come from and where they need to go. It gives them some inspiration, and hopefully, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, that we can come up with the funds to fund this vital project. I am totally in agreement with it if we can get things rolling. We don't have capital funds set aside, but I think, Mr. Mayor, you stated, there may be some leftover from capital projects, and I hope that is the case. The seven pillars come from Proverbs, and wisdom builds the house. I can't get started on that. But anyway, I hope that wisdom builds the house.
I'd just like to thank you, sir. Great project. I think it brings unity, showing Union and Lane is working together, a project to show history that is very important, that our youth knows that, you know, showing that we can come together and let them know where they come from and where they're going. I think the project I would like, our council, and thank our mayor and Union and Lane for working together, bringing this major project that I think would be something that the community would be proud of, showing that, you know, your history is being told. So I commend you and thank you all for coming up with this great idea.
May I just say, Mayor and council, that Lane College is very pleased to be a part of this project. We spoke with Mr. Benson several times, and we feel that this is a good project for the community. In that vein, I was glad to hear the council members speak about how it would... It's so important to have this type of project for the benefit of the young people who are here. So in that same vein, I would ask that the council and the mayor or whomever is in charge of it, when you go down the hallway here, we see all the pictures upside the wall of prior times in Jackson, but we see no African-Americans on that wall out there. So in keeping with this project and until this project comes to fruition, I would urge that the council or whomever is involved in it would seek to acquire pictures to integrate the Jackson, the African-American community in Jackson on the walls out here so that our young people can see it here in City Hall as well as seeing it on the hill at Sherlene Mercer Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Let me ask. I heard you speak of the Recreation Department being in charge of it and the access from the capital funds. What kind of timetable are we talking about?
Well, I think the next move, obviously, is present this project to the Parks and Recreation Board, which is an advisory board to this council and to me. I don't think there'll be an issue there. Tony kind of coordinates that board, and obviously, the strategy from this point on is if there is an issue, I'm sure they'll share it with Mr. Black. He'll share it with me, and I'll share it with you, but I don't think there'll be an issue. Mr. Black will then use in a collaborative way, using all the departments within the city, the Engineering Department, the Public Works Department, the Health and Sanitation Department, his department's groundskeeping and parks maintenance, and doing what we can in-house, and that is an expenditure of public funds when we do that, because we're using the city's equipment and using the city's personnel. But then if there are those costs which are going to be associated with the plaques and the stones and the transportation of those back to Jackson wherever we get them, that will be some costs, and I don't see that really being an issue with us handling that and moving this project forward. So that's what's planned at this time. The next move, Lee, would be to meet with the Park and Rec Board and then recommendation.
We have... We don't have to, but next week, by the charter, we meet every third month, so August, I think it's the third Monday in August, the October the twelfth, at our conference room in one eight and a half hours. Let me suggest also, and we'll discuss that in this process, if we're talking something of this quality and this caliber, there are some amenities that are already there that are going to need to be upgraded, to be very honest. The trail that's been put down is totally, totally inadequate. We were going to talk about people coming, and I think this will increase the visitation of people in the park, just additional amenities that we could be looking at, leveling, additions eroding, and some other things to discuss. Also, I'm going to encourage, as we talk, that there are some... There's a neighborhood association that's heavily involved in the government of their parks and things of the day. I think it's important that we listen to those particular interests and some other groups that we met with about some things that they play with, and that we don't contract with, so. Okay.
We have a...
So we're talking that before this administration is over, we should see it complete.
I certainly hope so.
Thank you.
We're going to try. I think the strategy is set before us. We have the plan. I think a lot of people need to be involved in this. For example, and Tony's exactly right, we have a neighborhood group who's been so instrumental in helping us with that particular park, and there are certainly some amenities out there which will need to be upgraded, as we've just done to Liberty Park, the trail there. Needs to be some work done in that park in order to accommodate the people who will be visiting and being more a part of the park on a daily basis. But at least we have a strategy, and I don't think it takes a vote from council. And Lee, I thank you for your work thus far, and Richard, thank you for being a part, bringing Lane College into it and being a part. We would like... I think as the day... The war closes, we would like to at some point have someone appear back before council and let us know about the seven either individuals. I'm not for sure council needs to be a part of that, and I know the mayor doesn't for sure, is to let us how those choices were made and some of the history behind that, but I'm sure you all will be able to do that.
I would like to leave this prior to the outcome of the council.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments from council?
I'm just hoping that our whole council's behind this. I mean, you know, it's a project that we want to be proud of for the whole community, so I'm hoping our whole council will support this project. It's very vital that we all do to show unity. So I'm asking support from all council members to at least think about it and support what we're trying to do.
Thanks. Wonderful idea.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much, guys. Thank you. Okay, item seven is... We have some first readings, and let me just indicate to council, we're going to, with your permission, we're going to take item two under first readings off for consideration of later date, not for this meeting, so we'll go back to item one. It's consideration of ordinance to rezone property located along three ninety block of Cooper Anderson Road from RS one, single-family residential district to RS one PRD, single-family residential planned residential development district comprising eleven point six seven acres submitted by Mac Alexander Engineering. Stan?
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. It was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending it to you. The area that's being rezoned to PRD, of course, stands for Planned Residential Development, and they've given us the development plan and also the house elevations that go with it. The reason why they are asking for PRD is not to bump up density. Their density is actually no more than the base zoning, which is RS one, and they also have to lay aside forty percent open space, so it's not a bumping of density. It just allows them some flexibilities on the lot sizes within the development. So that's why they're asking for the request.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. This is an ordinance on first reading, so we do have to accommodate a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to be here on this matter, speaking in opposition to, and approval of. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second and discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item number three, under first readings, would be consideration of ordinance to amend the charter, City of Jackson, relative to ordinance section twenty-six. I think council may have some information on that. If you want any more, Al is here to mainly advertising newspapers and that type of thing, trying to be consistent with state law.
Yes, Mayor and council, all we're trying to do here is Stan and I have looked at the charter. About three or four months ago, we had a charter review committee that proposed changes. Those did not get in time for up to the state legislature, so it's going to be presented at the next go-round. And we came up with an item here that, as Ms. Bell can tell you, is costing us thousands of dollars unnecessarily sometimes. Now, we're not going to take away public notices that are required by the state, but for example, a public notice that might be dedicating a street to a person's name, that doesn't really involve spending money or borrowing money or anything of that nature, and we're spending somewhat unnecessarily there. It costs a hundred and nineteen dollars just to do the public notice for this ordinance. It cost four hundred and thirty-five dollars when we did the ordinance, the public notice for the budget, but those are expenditures there that have to be made. This will just give us a little flexibility, whereas before it said all ordinances must be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the City of Jackson, and this just says required, those that are required by state, and then we're going to utilize our website, which most other municipalities are doing across the state. There's already a place under our public events on our website where we can post these notices and it'll get as much, if not more, exposure, because there's not that many people that read public notices in the paper anymore.
Okay, any questions from council?
Mr. Chairman. Relative to the second reading that we passed last month, item two, and what we're just doing now, how does that relate?
The one that you're doing on second reading was a zoning ordinance change, so it was a change to the actual official zoning ordinance of the City of Jackson, taking away the newspaper requirement for the border zoning appeals because it's not required by state law.
And this one?
This has to do with the city's charter. So the charter actually says that all ordinances right now have to be published in the paper of general circulation, but this would allow us to post the notices to our website for those that do not require newspaper notices under state law, like zonings. Zonings still require, you know, it be published in a paper, so we'll continue to do that. The ones that are required by state law, we will run them in the paper, but we'll also put them on the website, so if somebody got accustomed to using the website, it'll be there. be there. If it's, they've gotten accustomed to looking in the newspaper for certain things, then it'll be there where we're required.
Thank you.
Okay, in other words, the charter right now mandates a little bit more than the state law does, and it's costing us a considerable amount of money, so we're changing the charter. Okay, any questions? We have a motion for approval, the second. This was ordinance on first reading, so I'll open a public hearing, see if there's anyone here who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, on second readings, item eight, consideration of ordinance to rezon property located at 765 Hollywood Drive, RG2, General Residential District OC Office Center comprising five, 52 plus acres submitted by Rhonda Collins.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval on second readings, or second?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two, again, under second readings, consideration of ordinance to amend the text, official zoning ordinance, City of Jackson, Tennessee, Oracle, Administration Enforcement, section one, administrative officers, Steve, Board of Zoning Appeals, two proceedings relative to public notice. This is an ordinance on second reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item nine is new business. Consideration request to transfer three vacant lots from the City of Jackson to general affordable housing for the purpose of building three senior living duplexes. These will be rental units, as they've done in the past, been very successful.
Will there approval?
Have a motion for approval, second discussion.
Second.
Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Item two is, under new business, consideration of street acceptance for Palmer Woods, section 2A, a portion of Palmer Drive, A80 block, Fall Creek Drive, 5 to 48, and Windtree Cove, 7 to 8. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Also, street acceptance will be Palmer Woods, section 2B, Windtrace Cove, number 14 through number 55. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, second? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Again, under street acceptance, Shepherd's Field, section 6, Nehemiah Drive, 2764, Nehemiah Drive, 624, and Ezekiel Drive, 750.
So moved.
Have a motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Also, under Shepherd's Field, section 7, Nehemiah Drive, 29 through 101, Ezekiel Drive, 55 through 62. Is there a motion? Have a motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, under new business, is the election of a vice mayor, one-year term. Is there a nomination?
Would like to nominate Ms. Vicki Foot.
Okay, we have nomination of Councilwoman Foot for vice mayor for the next year. Any other nominations? Those who would like to accept Councilwoman Foot by motion, by acclamation, please vote yes. Please vote.
And the vote passes eight in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mayor, if I may, I would just like to say that it truly has been an honor to serve as a vice mayor this past year, and I'm more than willing and ready to pass that baton on to Councilwoman Foot and wish her the best of luck and good speed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thanks for your services.
Let's pray for our mayor, that he's going to be healthy and wear his seatbelt and be fine.
You know, I've been asked that question several times by council people. What can I help you in, Mayor? You know, I mean, it happens.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I'm welcome, and glad to serve.
Absolutely. Item four is consideration of grant applications for BJA Strategies for Policing Innovations. Who's here to discuss that? Anybody? Karen? Okay, good.
I have a question.
Good, thank you.
This is a grant for policing innovations, projected start date is October 1, 2018, if received, ends September 30, 2022. The federal amount would be $696,494.84. It would be an in-kind match, that would be matched by the police department, for total grant of $1,023,169 if received.
Okay, this is PD, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion for approval, second discussion.
Is this a new grant or is this a recog?
It is a new grant that they're applying for, for police innovations through the-
Through employees, we're paying-
It would be through in-kind match of employees, that is correct.
How long's the grant last?
It lasts until 2022 if received. It's a federal grant, will begin October 1, 2018. No requirement for staffing following the grant, unlike some of the others.
Okay, any questions? We vote already?
No.
Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. We have some board appointments, so we have a board appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board, the appointment of Amy Jones to replace Pat Mingle Dorff.
So moved.
Have a motion, the second. Any question? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
I'd like to recognize Mingle Dorff, who passed away recently for her long years of service to this city, not only on this board, but several to the Women's Club of Jackson, goes back years and years and years and years, very instrumental in renovation of the Carnegie Center when we first started, and they played a big, huge part in that, and Ms. Mingle Dorff was part of that, so to pray for her family. Also, appointment of Ross Priti to replace Scott Conger on the City Council Expenditure Committee.
So moved.
A motion, second.
Second.
Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with eight members in favor, one abstaining.
Under Civil Service Commission, we have the appointment of John Hodges to replace Richard Beach, and we have our Personnel Director back here. Thankfully, she is back, she's been off for a while, she's back, and would you like to make a presentation, Ms. Annie?
Not really.
No, we don't have to.
But you know, I've been off, like you said, and I've really been off, because I failed to call Mr. Beach to come and receive this-
We can send some of our cops after him, we know him personally, and it'll probably take them to-
I thought about it once I got here, and I thought, oops.
Okay, that's fine, we'll get it presented to him, that'll be fine, thank you, Lynn. Appreciate Richard, he served eight years on our-
Yes, sir.
-Civil Service Commission, that's quite a hitch, and he's done a great job, so we have that recommendation that John Hodges replaced Richard Beach. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, the second?
Second.
Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Bell, budget amendments.
We have one budget amendment before you this morning, this is for the library capital in the amount of $123,034.34, and this is for the replacement of an AC unit and roof repairs. This would require drawing fund balance.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
Question for me.
Sure.
Why does the city pay two-thirds and the county only pay one-third?
Well, we own the building.
Well, we've been split in fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that was a formula that was probably been in existence, I don't know, 10 years maybe, as far as the ownership of the, yeah, ownership of the library itself would be-
Change.
Yeah, would be the city, so any improvements, obviously, would be the city's improvements, so-
Parking lot?
Yep, parking lot is improvement.
I mean, the one that they're getting ready to do, the parking lot?
Yeah, the county has participated in that already, and we're getting ready to do the parking, probably within, hopefully, the next two or three weeks. Ms. Christian is here from the Library Board, and we appreciate her, but the AC is an emergency situation, we, it's out and obviously needs to be replaced. The county is participating on a one-third because it is going into a city building, and will be listed as a city asset.
Mayor, I have a question, if she could come up just for a second, the library-
Elaine, Elaine, would you come up?
Did you want Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Both of you can come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Harris, surely these repairs are important, but could you just give us an idea of the condition of the library and where we are relative to any continuing types of expenditures at the council, or may need to may?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all so much for hearing us today. The repairs that we're asking for is the roof in our Tennessee Room. Now, we have found out that that roof is covered by warranty, but because of repairs that had previously been done on it, they're going to have to bring it back up to warranty, so that's some good news. We don't know, they're still haven't gotten back with us on what it's going to take on that yet, but we, that was some good news on that part. And then on the HVAC, we have a 40-ton unit on the roof that's probably been there since the building was built, and we're celebrating our 50th year there this year, so that kind of speaks to the age of it. And we were having some trouble last year, and of course, we fixed all, with y'all's help and the county's help, we were able to fix half of our air conditioning, but the other half had not totally went down, so we, it wasn't fixed, and it has totally went down now, it's not even operating. We tried to get it repaired, and it's not repairable, so that's what this request is for. That unit controlled some of the most busy parts of the library, our children's area right now, and our teen room, which is, we're, you know, we're just hopping with all of our summer programming. We had 84 programs that we did for the public in July, June and July, and the temperature in the children's area is between 77 and 80 degrees, and the teen room is that hot as well, and the computer lab, which is widely used. So that's what these repairs are for. It's kind of an emergency situation. The Tennessee Room is our most special area that has things that can't be replaced there, you know, so, and then, like I said, the temperature's so hot, it's unbearable almost in the children's area.
What do you anticipate-
Well, after this is-
Coming, moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, with the repairs that were done last year on the HVAC-
Really concerned about.
And then if these repairs are done, we should be, I think that's going to take care of all of our HVAC we should be good for years to come, I would think.
Right, and you say the building's 50 years old.
Yes, sir.
Are we putting good money after bad money? When do we need to consider building a new library?
Today'd be a great, you really want me to go there? I have a vision, if y'all want to hear it sometime.
And just very quickly, in that vision, how much would that building cost?
Well, you know, I haven't calculated that, but it's $200 a square foot times at least a 60,000 square foot building, so what is that, $12 million? Yeah, I do dream a lot.
I would just like to also echo our appreciation on behalf of the board for the support of the City Council and the mayor and the things that we're trying to do to improve the library. I think for years when LSSI was there, there were some repairs that maybe got postponed, and the board is being very diligent and operating it back the way it had been for many years, but we've got some catch-up on some repairs that we've got to do. One concern we have is the fact that we, the current system that's downstairs is pulling double duty trying to cool parts that it was not made to cool, so we do have an emergency situation with the undue pressure that that's putting on the existing unit, and then in the computer room and teen room and some of the other areas during the busiest period of our season, it's just become unbearable. So we appreciate the council's support.
Mr. Chairman, move, we approve the amended budget, but I still say fifty-fifty.
Okay, we have a motion for approval of the budget amendment, the second?
Before we vote, just very quickly, I'd just like to say that if you want to see the priority of a city, you look at their library, and I think we need to seriously consider building a new library and moving forward with a project like that. Surely the city deserves it. I've had and told Ms. Harris the story that I had as a child at the library, and that's been a long time ago, so surely it's time to start thinking that way. Well, I just leave that alone. We thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Before we vote, I have a couple questions. The allocation for the city and county for operating expenses is fifty-fifty, is it paying that?
Yes.
What was it in the past for capital expenditure? Were we paying?
We were paying all of it.
We're paying a hundred percent?
It's a city building, it's listed as a city asset, still listed as a city asset owned by the city, and through some tentative negotiations, we had asked the county to come onboard to fund at least a third of any capital that was put into the building, and still city equipment, still has to be a city asset.
Ms. Harris, we've history on that, Councilman Wallace, we used to have a joint funding committee, and that was dissolved.
Right, that's why I wanted to understand what our future policy was going to be on it, whether we're, you know, changing that, or something, so we're hoping for a third, two-thirds, we're here for the county on the capital.
Well, y'all actually have a written agreement.
Do what?
Y'all do have a written agreement with the county that was signed since I've been there, and they had one before that, but I think it had expired, but the capital, I will say it's 50-50 if it does not have to do with the building.
Right.
It's only two-thirds, one-third when it has to do with the building.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And are we on the roof issue, are we dealing with that right now as well, or I know you'd mentioned something about-
I've already spoken with, one of the guys that came to give us an estimate realized it was a Garland roof, and he put us in touch with the Garland representative. We found out that it had been, that portion had been re-roofed when LSSI was there, we just didn't know it, and so he's working up what it's going to take to get it back up to warranty.
What's the amount of budget amendment, Ms. Bell?
The amount for the roof is a total of $22,000, where the city will pay $14,667, and the amount for the AC unit is $162.5, the city's portion is $108,333.34.
Okay, the council needs to realize, even though the budget amendment is passed for a certain amount, obviously, we're only going to expend what's necessary to correct any deficiency, so I think everybody understands that, but at least it'll give us, it'll give us the startup funding to get it done. Any other questions or comments?
I would like to extend an invitation to any of y'all that would love to come for a tour, I know I'm going to give Ross one, so any of y'all that would love to come, I'd love to show you what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to ask the council to put on your calendar September 15th, that's actually the 50th anniversary of the building. We do plan a rededication of the building, rededication of the new parking lot, and we would appreciate all of you participating in that. There'll be ribbon cutting, and we're asking our elected officials to participate, and we're really proud of some of the things that are going on, the programming and the response to the programming, specifically with the children and adult programs, so we're proud of what we've offering to the city.
Thank you, Elaine, thank you, Diane, if you're, okay, do we have a motion? We all have a motion, second? Any other additional comments or questions? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, council. Thank you all. Is that it, Ms. Bell?
Mm-hmm.
Good, okay. Before we handle Councilman Bray's issue here, is Lori Nunnery here from the Convention Investors Bureau? She's getting ready to throw her on the bus. Ryan, come on up, I'll throw you on the bus for about two minutes, come on, come on up. Can you, we need just a brief, a brief overview of the grant that we were awarded through the city for $100,000 from a foundation. Could you mind briefing the council on a little bit of that and what's going on?
I can try.
Okay.
The location of the proposed dog park will be the property between Delta Fawcett and Jackson Generals Park. Delta Fawcett gave the city, I think it's 10 to 12 acres. If you're sending in the park and were to hit a ball over right field fence, it will be that property right there. The idea is to use that location because of the visibility off Interstate 40, to invite people to get off the interstate while they're traveling with their pets, use the park, also to build that area up so that you can actually watch a ballgame from the park, and I think the Generals are going to build an access point from the park into the actual baseball stadium. gonna build an access point from the park into the actual baseball stadium. Uh, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, that we were, we were awarded the grand prize, which was the hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and there's, there's no local match to that. I guess our contribution is the, the actual land. Uh, so we're excited about it. We think it's gonna be a great access, uh, a great thing for the community, and you, and you incorporate that with the, the park that's gonna be out by three-way, which will have a retriever training, a pond. We think that we can start getting some competitions and things like that, get people in the community to spend the night, spend money, uh, which is good for all of us.
Yeah, okay. Think you're right, a hundred thousand, um, um, grant through a foundation, Randy Boyd Foundation for the park with no, no match. So we're looking forward to getting that. Good, good things happen when people work together. We have the Chamber, had the city, had the, uh, West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation, uh, working on this, so we appreciate all of our partners in putting this together and, uh.
Mayor, just out of curiosity, maintaining the park, who is?
There you go. There you go.
And the cost, and the cost of that would?
Well, I, you know, I don't know the cost of mowing the grass. Uh, I, that's about gonna be it. There'll be some, some landscaping, I'm sure.
Well, it's mowing the grass, it's, uh, depending upon if they're gonna have some different maintenance that are involved in the dog parks. They've got a lot of new fancy stuff, you know, they need some maintenance on that, but.
Would it be personnel as well?
No.
The thought is to have two different fenced areas. One, I believe, is about twelve thousand square feet. The other is about ten thousand square feet, one designated for large dogs.
You have to separate it.
Right, one designated for smaller dogs. Inside the fenced areas will be obstacles and things like that, uh, for the, for the pets, but I believe the, the majority of the maintenance will be cutting grass.
Okay, alright, thanks, thanks, Ryan, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, item, uh, item seven is consideration invoices over ten thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And there being no further business, meeting is adjourned.